The Policy Subcommittee is meeting on March 28. Roll call, please.
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Here. Salute to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America, which with the public stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged impermissible. Okay, so there's no citizens input, so we'll go right to the discussion. Rule number three, 3.01, discussion and vote to refer to review the fiscal management policy. And Kevin, how about you?
Sure. So what you have in front of you is the updated fiscal management policies. What we've done is highlighted in yellow the changes to the policies. In particular, what -- things that have been updated are things in reference to SOA and making the budget more transparent and that kind of thing. And in particular, in the policy DB, the annual budget policy, it gives a bigger description on the annual budget and the process. It describes the foundation budget, which items are reflective in the foundation budget and which items you have to exclude. In addition, the budget deadlines and schedules filed policy DBC, it shortens the policy, but it just essentially says it's a backwards map of when the budget is finally adopted in June, dating back to when we actually start the process. So, you know, as you all know, we start the process typically in the October-November timeframe and work on our schedule, as we usually do. Just a quick point of clarification here. On policy DBC, it references selectmen, I should say, city council. And then in the one, two, three, the fourth paragraph, it references selectmen again, I should say city council as well. So.
Are these just the policies from MASC?
Yes.
We're not, these aren't your own recommendations?
No, this is --
So.
We get updated policies yearly.
We'll talk about it later, because I just think, for me personally, we're Fall River Public Schools. MASC doesn't dictate to us what we do. We should be doing what we think is appropriate for us, not just following what they do. So that's just an aside, but as I was seeing it, I was just, and that language made me kind of think that this is template language from them.
Right.
Thanks. So, just kind of going on, the big, the big policy change here that's being recommended is the adoption of the budget by the school committee at the cost center level. So, file DBG, our policy DBG. Cost centers should represent appropriate levels of transparency for the committee to oversee goal implementation while allowing for administrative day-to-day work. Cost centers will be agreed upon by the committee and the administration. So that's the big, the big policy change here. Now, file policy DBJ. It recommends having quarterly reports being given to you. Currently, we're doing, we do monthly reports, but using the approach of the cost center approach, what I, I think what we'll do in the future in next year, for next year's budget and for fiscal year '23 going forward, is provide you with the same quarter, same report that we provide you on a monthly basis, but give you the detailed quarterly report that's being discussed here on a quarterly basis, so have a further, a further financial discussion. So, policy DD, just, it goes on to talk about grants and gifts, and the fact that, you know, when we apply for a grant and getting the acceptance by the school committee. Policy DEC, that's a new policy, and it's the federal funds supplement to not supplant policy. So essentially, it just says that you can't, you can't supplant your budget. So you got, when you get federal funds, you got to supplement what you're currently doing in your budget. So it's anything above and beyond. So that's essentially what that policy discusses. And then, I believe, the next update is policy DIE, the audits policy. So it goes to, it describes to you what we're required to do on a yearly basis with the audits from, so we get, every year, we have the end-of-year financial audit. We have the GAZB 34 audit, which is done through the city that we're a part of. We get the federal grants audit, which is the single, the single audit, it's a part of the single audit act that we get done, have done every year. It's an audit of all our federal grants. And the student activity account audit, it gets done as part of the GAZB 34 audit. So all gets worked out. So now, this policy now just states everything, whereas the old policy did not describe all the audits that we do. It just gave like a very, very general description. Policy DJ for the purchasing. Essentially, it just goes on to talk about the fact that we're going out for the lowest possible price on everything we purchase. It provides the superintendent, she designates who the purchasing agent is for the district, which in this case is me, I oversee all the purchases. And talks about purchase orders and stuff. And then, I believe, those are the updates to the financial policy. We'll open up the discussion.
For DBG, Kevin, right?
Yep.
You said that one has the most, that's the biggest change?
Yeah, that's the big change, yes.
What, so what's like an example of that?
So, we've, you know, I know we've talked about the line, the fact that we've brought on a total bottom line, bottom line dollar amount. So that will change in the future. So it'll change when we develop next year's budget, when we report out to you next year. So what we'll do is, we'll provide you, at that, at that point, that level, quarterly, we'll provide you with updates on a cost center basis. So you'll be able to see all the line items, every single, every department, every school, and for every department. And each one of them will be cost centers. You'll be able to see each cost center broken out with totals, with what's been spent to date, so on and so forth.
So, just speaking of that, I appreciate the theory here behind the cost centers, I think we need, I've said that very much over and over. What I would like to, as we proceed for the current budget, we already approved the budget, the draft budget, so I would anticipate that we approve the regular budget. But I think for July 1, we have time to implement this for the current, not so much for the budget, approving the budget process, but how it gets reported, starting in July. I think it'd be a good sign of like working together to say, this is what we have.
So can I ask you a question?
Yep.
So, as I like laid it, as I laid it out, so could I continue to do, so you guys get a monthly update, could I give you that update that we do monthly, and then on a quarterly basis, provide you with a cost center approach, you know, report for you guys, so that you have? Is that sufficient enough?
I would, I would say if we have this committee be more involved in the cost centers, FTEs, like I think we had to tease out before it gets to the full committee, what is a cost center? Like defining a cost center, because some people don't know exactly what that means or whatever. So, for instance, I would envision a school being a cost center.
Correct.
So in given school, we would have 40 teachers, 10 counselors, 20, whatever. So when I envision a cost center, if we approve a budget as such, the committee is doing their financial, fiduciary responsibility in saying, here's the budget for this school with X amount of employees. The superintendent can therefore, if one person leaves, one person gets replaced within that, which is what your practice is anyway. And I would say practice and policy should be the same. So I would be of the belief that we don't need monthly reports. We would need, if we do, on the front end, everybody on the same page, here's what we have, here's what we have, the number of employees and the like, I don't think we have a need for that monthly report. I think that's a little overkill if we did, on the front end, this stuff. So I would say at quarterly, we have the report along with the transfers.
Okay.
I think that would be sufficient as far as this member is concerned.
Okay.
But on the front end, if we say, this is what we have, I think it's fair to say, three months from now, at a monthly meeting, if the superintendent says, oh, I need to add another position X, Y, and Z, that can happen on a monthly basis. But I think sometimes when you report out the monthly report, it's almost like, it's really not an eye-opener for anybody, to be honest. And other than that, it makes it look like as if we're just either not addressing. So when we accept a monthly report, there's no question, with no, nobody, it makes it look like as if we're not doing our piece, whereas we would review it quarterly, maybe in a more depth. You know, you're going to tell us where the projected transfers are going to come from, but on a quarterly basis. So I think that, to me, would, would make sense. But I think you've got time to tweak this between now and the, and the full committee.
I just wanted to make, what you said, Kevin, or maybe Mr. Agia, said the monthly reporting is overkill?
I said that.
Oh, you said that, okay. All right.
It's, it's a bigger, so just to clear, it's a much bigger report that would have to be done quarterly.
Right.
So it's going to involve more work. I'm going to say that from the get-go.
But if what I'm hearing is we're going to break it down by cost center, and then when the changes are reported, will reported by cost centers too?
Yeah.
Okay, where the changes came from?
And the cost centers.
And front load that.
Of course.
We can front load that work.
Quarterly, yeah.
So you would identify the cost centers, like, you know, it used to be the schools were a cost center, a department was a cost center. So they would have to define for the full committee what, so our budget will have 27 cost centers, 22 cost centers, 20, whatever they come up with recommendation. So now, we would know, here's where each department is. Somebody came to you from the public and said, Mr. Bailey, how many FTEs do you have in a certain cost center? Right now, you can't really say as clearly as what we would in the future.
Yeah.
To say, no, we look at it, we approved 18 costs, 18 employees, we still have 18. We have two vacancies, we, it helps us to manage to know where the, the money is going. But I think quarterly, more in-depth quarterly makes more sense than having to prepare a monthly, you know.
And when we, when we look at, like, Kevin, the budget and those cost centers, like we, like we discussed, we'll have, we'll have the, the school, and then the lot, the bottom line item, budget, numbered for that particular school, that particular department, and so on.
Exactly. Yep. And you'll have more, there'll be more detail, you'll have all the lines too, that fall within that category, within the cost center.
Is there any more?
There's some more questions. So, some of the policies, as I mentioned earlier, are from the MASC.
Yes.
What I would personally like to see before we get to the full committee, is to have your recommendation, Madam Superintendent. So some of these things are what the state asks us for. Some of them don't really need to be in policy. The one about the federal law, whatever, that doesn't necessarily, that's the law, we have to follow it. So I think looking through this and saying, here's what I think is the policies that are needed, and, and not adding to it, because sometimes I think the school committee folks send us all these things, oh, you should have this, you should have that, but I'd rather have it be you to say, talking to your departments and say, this makes sense, or this doesn't make sense, because we don't need a policy book this thick if it can be defined. And I think adding the piece of the cost centers makes it much more controlled, you know, so some of this stuff might not be needed. But I'd rather, if it came from you to say, you reviewed all of these things, and this is what I recommend keeping or not keeping, rather than go through the whole thing, I think would make, would make sense. The purchasing is, did we not have one? I see the whole thing was highlighted.
We did, but it was very, very small, it was small and not very specific.
Okay, so we, some of these have like non-highlighted and highlighted?
Yeah.
And then some are just totally highlighted. Does that, does that mean we're getting rid of the little language?
Yes.
In another, so maybe before the committee?
Purchasing was only the short one, so.
Correct.
But where did that, oh, it's underneath. So we get rid of DGA, is that? DGA is the one, that one page?
DJA was the one.
Yeah. So this is what we had it for?
Right.
And we're changing it to this?
It's more comprehensive. If you notice, a lot of the correction, a lot of the recommendations are more detailed than what we have in place.
Yeah, so I guess my only comment on that would be to, for the full committee, when they review it, just have it.
The old one?
The old one, and say, old, you know, and this is what we're recommending new, so we can chase, trace it back if it ever. I've had a hard time trying to figure out old policies that are no longer in existence, where they came from. But I think other, other than that, the, I do appreciate the, the time, the schedules and all that stuff makes sense. And my last point is just to try to, however we can implement it for July, I think that would be important. Would that, are you? Make the motion approve?
Okay, there's a motion by Mr. Agia to approve. Is there a second?
A second.
Roll call?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes. Discussion 3.02, vote to refer, update face covering policies?
I'm sorry, it was, we need that to report to the full committee.
Yep.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's what the vote is, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, when I say motion to accept was to, except for referring recommendation, so we can take another vote if you want to make it.
It's up to you.
I think that is good.
Yeah, all right.
Okay.
Superintendent?
Yes, so what you have for you is the mask, the face covering policy. As you know, we had a policy that we put in place last year, and what, MASC, given that we're all back, has recommended policy, which, when we had talked about going back and removing masks, we said that there were three conditions that were being recommended, and that's students returning from a positive test. They would need to still mask up for five additional days as they finish up their quarantine. Also, masks are required in all school health offices, so every school nurse's office has a box of masks, because students are, or adults, if they're going there, usually they're not feeling well, so as a precaution, they will mask up until they're seen, until they're deemed safe to return to class, or whether they're going to be dismissed to go home. And also, until April 18th, so far, masks on buses are being required on city buses.
And it ends, sorry, it ends in the?
That's a, that's a federal? Well, there, I think they're going to review on the 18th, so we don't know, but it may be removed. So those are the only changes, and this is the recommended face covering policy, adjusted policy.
Are there any questions, Mr. Agia?
So on that last piece of the, with the school buses?
Yes.
I think if we added something along the lines of, if it's in effect, so that we don't have to, once we put in the policy that this is, I think we should put like a caveat to say, once it's eliminated, it automatically gets eliminated from our policy, so that we don't have to come back and meet to still be in compliance.
So while under federal mandate, or federal regulation?
Yeah, something, because as I'm reading, it says by federal health order, all students are required to wear a mask.
Yeah.
That's subject to a timeline of when they say it. So if we put some sort of language to say, once the federal law is out, then, you know what I mean? We wouldn't have to come back. If we didn't do that, we'd have to technically come back to.
Okay, so we'll put subject to lifting a federal mandate, or, does that, does that make sense?
Yeah. But also too, though, what, how is, is this being enforced?
Yeah, on, on sorta buses, the kids have to wear their masks. It's not school buses anymore, just federal, yeah, that's federal. They, they follow the TSA guidelines, so until they lift that, if, if it's lifted on 18th, then it will be okay, but it's until then, they're required.
Yeah, whatever language, I think you, even the five days piece, I think you should put some caveat in here to say, because that's a regulation as well from the state?
Yeah, it's, well, it's recommended by DPH and DESI.
So I think you, you need to give an out to, once, once either of those is eliminated, these policies will no longer be in existence or something, because otherwise we wouldn't be in compliance.
Okay.
Motion approved, refer as amended?
Motion has been made by Mr. Agia to approve and vote to refer, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Roll call?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Harp?
Yes. Item number 3.03, discussion and vote to refer to review the use of school facilities policy. Ken?
Sure. So, on the policy, a couple of highlights, probably not highlighted on yours, because that's the original policy. I highlighted them just because I think they're, they're, sometimes we, we don't look at these particular pieces, so the E on use of, use of facilities for a charge, number one E, Fall River Public Schools should not bear the cost associated with the use of schools by any outside group, whether it's profit or nonprofit. So for instance, if a school is using a facility on a Saturday, we have a cost, no matter what. So if, if a private group, nonprofit, uses a building, there are going to be costs. We have a custodian to bring in, we have security to bring in. So to say that we will not charge nonprofits is against that policy. That's, that's the first one. I'd like to add an F to that particular piece, and that would be, all artificial turf fields will have a minimum cost with any usage, not directly associated with Fall River Public Schools. So if, if there's a rental, that is, an outside group, and whether they're profit or nonprofit, there is a minimum cost to use that field, just because of the nature of the field and the fact that it'll, the requirement to replace those fields would need to be covered. So a grass field is a different situation, because we can let people use the grass fields at no cost, as long as they, they comply with one of the regulations we have, and that is, they have to rent porta-johns for whatever. So if we have a Little League group that wants to use the field at the Fonsaker School, as Columbus Little League always did, they would need to rent porta-johns. And then there's no cost to us whatsoever, other than, we're going to cut that grass anyway. They would have to groom the field themselves as far as game days and things like that, but we wouldn't have a cost to bear.
Kenny, what's the minimum cost for the?
So we would come up with a minimum, a minimum charge as to what it would, for instance, if you look at, well, it's not included, but most of this refers to a schedule, and the schedule is the one item that we have brought to full committee, and that is the charges, the hourly charges for the field. So there may not be charges for custodial, there may not be charges for groundskeepers to use, let's say, the stadium, for instance, however, there would be a minimum charge to use the field.
Will there be?
And it's broken up nonprofit and profit.
Right. So when you say minimum cost, that's, you're going to come up with that minimum cost?
It's already, it's already in the?
Oh, it's in the charts?
It's in the charts.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
So all those, all those charges are already there?
Yeah.
It does break it up in four categories, nonprofit, profit, within the community, and nonprofit, profit, out of the community. And the use of facilities piece, again, I, I highlighted the ones at no charge, which again, I think we have to distinguish what the no charge would be. So if someone wanted to use Spencer Borden from Monday through Friday, after, up until 9:00, 9:30, then there would be no charge, because we have everyone here. So there is no extra charge to particularly do that. So we're not always, we're not necessarily charging that. If you wanted to do a community-based, for lack of a better word, a freebie, no charge if you're coming into the building. Now, we do have a charge for, for community profit that we would charge an hourly rate for, and we have the same thing for a out-of-community, both charged nonprofit and profit. So the only, the only no charge completely would necessarily be, would, would end up being a community group that you wanted to use the building within our operating hours, so that we're not incurring any extra personnel costs. And with that, the superintendent may authorize the use of facilities at a reduced charge or without charge, except for any charges associated with the supervision or cleanup. So that basically addresses that, that piece. So there's nothing to change in any of this. And then the fees, all of that schedule, and once the school committee approves the, the fees that, that we proposed, then that would be what we would be using for our day-to-day operations. And then, the only other thing that we've probably not enforced is that any organization using the school are responsible to get the proper permits if they're selling anything, you know, food, bringing food in, or, or anything like that. So they would need some permits from, if they're handing out food, food handlers, things like that.
Open for questions? Mr. Agia?
So Wendy, where you added the, so E on one E says shall not bear the cost, which I agree with, it's not costing us anything.
Right.
I think that ties into the second one, having the superintendent be this authority of, if somebody wants to get it reduced, they have to notify her.
Right.
So that it can be, I do agree with that as well. The, the fee structure that you talked about, I think that, I'm not sure, I think that might have gone to facilities a year ago, or something like that?
It went to facilities, but also went to full council.
Yeah, I think that's where the, some of the further questions are going to come in. I think this takes care of the piece of whether a nonprofit gets to use it, but the real issue's going to be the whole piece, you know, that schedule?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm not sure how to?
Talking about the fee schedule?
Yeah, so the fee schedule?
I know it was in facility, but it did go to the full body?
It went to full body.
Into table?
I think it went to full body in February.
And then we referred back.
And we referred back here. Full, full body.
Oh, that's right.
For the facilities.
That's right.
It's going.
So the backend facilities for the fee structure?
Yes.
So I think that's where this, I mean, this would be good to take care of the nonprofit pieces that we were trying to address, but I still think that there's some issues with the schedule, so that we can, at the full committee, you want both done at the same time, I would assume, so I think that's where we're, we'd have to look at it. That'll be the turf minimum cost, or, you know. The only other thing I would say is, when we use the use of schools account, I don't know if there's a turf fee, you know, like if, how that's broken up, but I think at some point, we should look at targeting, so we're making money on the fields, that that gets broken up somehow, so we as a committee know, here's how much money we make on the fields.
As a separate, kind of a separate pocket?
Like a division of the thing, because we could keep on saying we're, we're making money on the fields, and it's chump change, for lack of a better way to say it sometimes, than what it is, or what are we going to do with that money? Do we, is it profitable? It'll help us to understand what, what does it really take to replace that carpet up there? You got to rent a lot of times in order to get a million dollars.
Shot a lot, too.
You know, so.
But I, I think going along with that, and why I say there needs to be that minimum charge is, what, what will happen is, if the nonprofits, if the fee is so low, the nonprofits are going to tie up all of the time that's possible for those rentals, and therefore, there'll be no purpose in having that separate item, because there'll be no money in it.
But that was, that was the concern, right?
So if you, right, if we really want to build that, that plan, that the carpets can be replaced on a, when they should be replaced, then I think that there are. can be replaced on a, when they should be replaced, then I think that there has to be a certain amount of time that we allot, whether it, I don't know, I don't know how you would do that if it's, you know, 15 hours a month, 20 hours a month, or something like that, that would be set aside for the nonprofits, and then the remaining time would be up for rent.
And what's the warranty on those?
The 10-year, 10 to 12 years, it's not as much a warranty as it is a, you know, life cycle.
Right, right.
So.
As far as the facilities themselves, talks about personnel being there till about like nine o'clock. If, let's say, the Pop Warner team is using it, and the lights, and it got dark at a certain time, how does that factor in, or like, how do we?
So there would be a fee for the lights, so like, the parks, they pay, they actually pay for their own meter. At Henry Law, that is, that meter is in Pop Warner's name. Over here, it wouldn't be, so we would have a fee for the lighting. So if they were, if they were playing on Saturday and Sunday, and they didn't need to go into the, into the evening, then there would be no fee for lighting. If they're using it during the week, then there would be a fee, you know. And we would probably hope, and again, it could be one more item, is we would adopt the city's regulations on hours.
Yeah.
So that lights out, 10 o'clock.
Yeah.
You know, no starting and winning, or something like that, so that you wouldn't disrupt the neighborhood with the lighting.
When did that get switched over at Henry Law, Kenny?
It was switched for a while.
Five years ago, six years ago.
Yeah, since they, since the lights went up, that was switched.
How often do you have, so if you rent it one time, you've got to get a porta-john? So like that?
Well, that would, that's the issue. Do we, do we, the only other choice is, we can't let somebody use a facility knowing full well that the building's going to be locked, because we're not going to let people into the building to use the bathrooms. So, and the only place that that, well, the only two places is Cuss and soon-to-be Talbot Hospital, so three, that we would have outside facilities available to the public. So Pop Warner has it, but they do have the season. It's a good point as to what you would do, but knowing full well that if we don't have a porta, if we don't have them use a porta-john, and the bathrooms are not closed, we know that all of those people are using something.
But I'm thinking of in a park, like if you had baseball practice at Kennedy Park, and there's nobody around, you know, those bathrooms aren't open.
Right.
They still get to practice without it, so I'm just wondering if there needs to be a, if you have it on a regular basis, like if I'm going to run a league, and I'm having it every Tuesday and Thursday for the season.
Right.
I should have a porta-john there. But if I happen to be somebody that wants to have, just to practice, like, what is the cutoff for when you need it? So I have a Tuesday, Thursday, I get a porta-john. This gentleman uses it the other day, does he use my porta-john? Like, on our facilities, I'm just thinking, sometimes it can get a little, if you're not given exclusive use of the?
If you're not having exclusive use, right.
You know, so it might not apply to a lot of places, but the ones that are long-term, it totally makes more sense.
Well, you could say that if you're going to use it more than once in a week, you'd have to have a porta-john. I mean, we could come up with something that's simple.
Yeah, yeah, exactly what you're saying, something, anything that kind of, it'll allow for somebody to say, he wants to take a bunch of kids and say, we're going to go play at the, at the place behind Fonseca with a bunch of Fonseca kids. That wouldn't necessarily, that one-shot deal?
Right.
Means they need a porta-john, unless we put maybe more than once in a week, or something like that.
Right.
Yep. I make a motion to refer?
Motion is made to refer, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Roll call?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Har.
Yes.
You're going to refer to facilities?
Hold on a second.
Oh.
That's, so this is going to go to facilities, so we can finish this before it goes to full?
Yeah, well, I thought just a?
I was thinking this part is good, for us, because this is a policy.
Okay.
The money piece of the thing would go to facilities, I think.
It's already in there anyway, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would think this could go directly.
Okay.
3.04, discussion and vote to refer to review the following policies listed, and that's Dr. Taylor.
Sure, so you have three policies in front of you. We were asked to adopt these policies after we received a report in December from DESI around the policies that we have that support educational sustainability. So there are three categories of policies we have in front of you. One is for homeless students. We had this policy in our FRPS manual already, but there wasn't a designation that it had been approved by school committee. So in distance, which is a technical glitch that we want to fix. The other two policies, one is around how we support military families, and the other one is around children in foster care. So in 2019, MAS, well, DESI urged that we break out how we support homeless students, separate that from how we support foster care students, and they strongly recommend that we have policies around military-connected families. So these policies are taken from the MAS database, and we'd like to move to vote for them to refer those to the full committee.
Is there any, Mr. Agia?
The first policy, the homeless students?
Yep.
You just, I was trying to read it while you were talking, but the, it talks about the school of origin, and then the different levels. Can you explain that? Is that a, is that a hog, like, once you go to elementary to middle, you go to your home school now, or how, am I mixing up two things, or not? Feel free to let me know.
No, I know what you're referring to. So if a student is designated as homeless on McKinney-Vento, they always have the right to attend the school of origin. So it could be from kindergarten through sixth grade, right? Sixth grade, they move into a middle school. But at that point, we have been told by DESI that once a student's about to graduate, we can have a conversation with whatever district they're in, where the temporary housing exists, and try to collaborate and encourage the family to attend school in that district that they're currently in. So we've had a number of cases this year where we have families living in shelters in Brockton or in Attleboro, and some families are multi-year. We've been advised by DESI that at the end of each year, to review those families, those families' placements, and to make, you know, talk with the family, collaborating about what really is the best, sort of like an informal best determination meeting. So we've been asked to do that with our families, so we get clear on who our McKinney-Vento families are and who aren't.
So if the student is here from K to five, at six, they go to the home school automatically?
No, they couldn't stay in Forward Republic Schools.
And that's a, because I think that's where I was reading, it was, it sort of looked wishy-washy a little, whereas it's not?
It's a bit, they, technically, they can stay if they choose to do K through 12 in Forward Republic Schools, as long as they're designated homeless, and that's whether they're doubling up, or living in a shelter, or living in a hotel, or living temporarily with relatives, they have a spot in our district.
And there's no, is there a DESI person who does appeals on that? Like, is there, how does it work if there's a dispute? I mean, it's all well and good when we all say, let's talk about what's best for the child, you know, but at some point, some of these cases can get a little costly to the districts, and then not, we could feel like it's not in the best interest of the child to be driving 45 minutes every day, and then the parent could say something else. Wendy, is there an arbiter of that to say?
There isn't. So we have contacted support, but we've been told as a district, we could file a report with DESI to say that we have a family that's for multi-year been designated a McKinney-Vento, but there isn't necessarily a arbiter, or, you know, a DESI official who says, you can know, like, this is the final decision. So in theory, two districts can duke it out for multiple years.
We, we can't force them to go to, like, we have students, for instance, we have a family that lived in Brockton, but they were commuting to Fall River. We can't force them, we can certainly have a conversation with that parent, but where they're, lay their head when they have their home, is where they have a right to attend.
Yeah, no, I totally, I hear that. I think sometimes it's like the third rail, we don't want to discuss it as far as laws, regulations, and stuff, but it's a reality that I think we need to address, because we say that, and then McKinney-Vento's the homeless, and then the money comes to transportation, it's not 100%, it's a mandate for us, but it's not 100% reimbursed.
Right.
So the state's telling us that we have to transport this child, but they're not giving us the money to replace 100% of our transportation. That's in every district, that's just not right, that's not fair.
Agreed.
So I think we need to, I have no problem, this is kind of the way it's got to be, but I would ask the superintendent to write a letter to the local legislative delegation, asking for them to meet, to discuss this issue, both the laws, regulations around it, as well as 100% of McKinney-Vento reimbursement. I find it totally illogical that we have $20 million more from the state, but we're not 100% funded on a mandate like McKinney-Vento. And that little district, like the one I work in in Westport, at the same, that money costs a lot more in Westport than here, just not right. So I would ask to, to me, I'm happy to join in a meeting if I can, but if we just keep letting these things go on and on, they're never going to fix it. So I do want to support the kids, no matter where they're at, but at some point enough, like, we have to say, you move on to the next thing, otherwise, we're just going to continue it down, you know, that path. So, would that make a motion to approve the three, or forward the three, refer the three?
Motion is made to refer, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Roll call?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Next is 3.05, discussion and vote to refer to review the following policies listed. Is that Dr. Taylor as well?
No, that's, that's actually me.
Oh, that's you, I'm sorry.
Yep.
Sorry, Dr. Taylor.
That's okay.
That's okay. So there were some major changes in the Title IX law in 2020, and as a result, we consulted with the attorneys on how we should revise our policy, as well as MAS sending down this policy in 2021 for adoption. So previously, there was a policy called ACAB, and it covered harassment of students, and that was both types of harassment, general harassment, and as well as sexual harassment, and they both live within that same policy. As a result of the changes in Title IX and the requirements involved in that, they split the policy. So there's a new policy, ACAB. If it would help the committee, I've made copies of the policies here that, you know, might shed some light on this. So the new ACAB policy focuses solely on the sexual harassment, the Title IX complaints, and as a result, there's also a procedural piece to that, which, when you look at a Forward policy, and it has a letter, and it's followed by an R, that means it's reference material for that policy, it's like a guide for the policy. So the new policy would be, for the Title IX piece, it would be the ACB, AR, I'm sorry, RA, which is this document here. And that is really the step-by-step manual on following one of those policies. And the reason this is so complicated, this binder right here is all the forms that go with the Title IX investigation. So if there is a complaint or grievance on the basis of sexual discrimination, whether it be for gender, sexual preference, some type of sexual harassment, whether it be physical or verbal, you have to file a Title IX investigation and begin that process. And so this policy would split the old policy into one that just deals solely with the sexual harassment piece of it. And that, that policy would be ACAB and ACABRA, which is the manual for it. And it also designates specific roles for the people who take part in the investigation, it can't just be one person doing the investigation, it has to be a facilitator, a coordinator, it has to be an investigator, it has to be a decision-maker, and then there's an appeals officer if somebody disagrees with the decision. So it's a, it's a very involved process, and that's all to do with the Title IX changes that came down at the end of 2020. By taking the sexual policy, the sexual harassment policy, and make it a separate thing, there's also now a separate policy for harassment and retaliation, and that policy has its own manual, which is based on the civil rights piece. And as the committee is aware, we had some problems with some allegations of discrimination, so this would be the how-to manual for that, and that is this document here, which would be a civil rights grievance. And that policy would become ACRB, which is the reference material for dealing with a civil rights complaint, not tied to sexual harassment or Title IX in any way, this would be the manual for that. And again, it's a, as a procedure, it defines roles, and that policy goes through.
Is that in our package?
Yeah.
Excuse me?
Do they have the procedural then?
It is, it is in there, it's just not identified by the letter. It's, it says civil rights grievance procedure, it should be in your packet.
No, it's on top, Tom, you have it on top.
Yep, it's in the top right-hand corner, it says ACRB.
I see, yeah.
Okay. In addition, it breaks out harassment, a student, student-on-student, or adult-on-student, that's the policy JICK. So that's conflict between students. And recently, we have, we already have the policy in place, which is our bullying and bullying investigation policy, which is JICFB, that's already posted on the website, and that was updated in October of '21.
Okay, Tom, you just said student-on-student?
Yeah, that would be JICK.
JICK.
And that's for harassment, but if it's bullying, it's the JICFB policy. And I apologize that this is so complicated, but that's the way the policies are now broken.
And have you, have you brought up yet adult-on-adult?
That would follow under the harassment, the civil rights policy, ACRB.
ACRB.
Yep. ACRA, which is just prohibiting harassment, and the investigation piece is ACRB, and that is that policy, that's the one that says civil rights grievance procedure.
Oh, I see, okay, okay. Are there any other questions for Mr. Agia? Mr. Agia?
So the, I'm just trying to read these as we're going.
I apologize, it's complicated, I know that.
My concern is that we don't have a policy, we haven't had a policy of, you know, adult bullying in the school, so the language that says student, in the reports that we got that said, but for us not having a policy to say, you're not supposed to harass adults, we don't have anything to go on, which I thought was ridiculous, but I'm not so sure, just by reading this as you were going, that it's as explicit as it needs to be on what to do when a person is harassing another employee. And I know you said it's part of this, but as you were reading, I'm like, it doesn't necessarily say in an explicit way, so I'm wondering if these policies were verbatim what MAS recommended, or are these our recommendations?
These are our policies, where we took policies that were already given to us by MAS, sent them to the attorney, and got their advice on how to proceed with that, and these contain those modifications.
Okay, so what I would recommend is, before this goes to the full committee, that we get a?
Highlight that and walk through the process.
Some more like a?
Language to it.
Just very clear language, that we can't have an employee treating people like, whether it's civil rights, whether, when you look at the harassment of students policy, I think it should be a harassment policy. And in, within that, it also should say somewhere, that a staff member can't harass another staff member.
So, so the policy that begins with the letter J, that's really in a bunch of policies that relate to student affairs. The policies that A, that begin with A, apply to everybody, and I'll pull out the language that shows the AC harassment policy, the harassment's prohibited, and then the, sort of the flow chart of how it goes through, whether it's related to sexual harassment or just regular harassment, whether it be gestures, slurs, comments, discrimination, any of those things, and I'll make that explicit.
Because, yeah, I mean, Mr. Agia, it's not clear, like, I see that it's not clear.
Like I said, it's, there's probably 10 policies in front of me right, right here, right now, and sorting through them to try to make them digestible for the committee. What I'll do is I'll highlight those pieces similar to what Mr. Agia, Mr. Almeda did, and I'll send those out to the committee before the next meeting.
Like, I'm reading the harassment of students policy. The first line says harassment of students by other students, employees, vendors, or other third parties will not be tolerated in the public schools. Mustn't go, well, conduct, all that other stuff, but it doesn't necessarily say within here that it can be an adult. I know this is meant for the students.
Because that's a student.
But the statement harassment of students by other students, employees, something as explicit as that for adults is where I'm looking for.
Harassment.
Correct.
That's basically, so maybe it's like, even though it might be buried within the civil rights grievance procedure, I think having something that says harassment of anyone is unacceptable.
Yeah.
Something along those lines.
AC is nondiscrimination, that's another policy that's in there, nondiscrimination on the basis of several different fields. ACE is specific to disabilities. So there's a number of policies, I'll highlight the pieces that I, I think the committee needs to see, and I'll send those to you.
But what I'm saying is we should create another policy, so those are going to be buried under AC, 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 whatever those things are. What I'm suggesting is that we have a policy that says, if I'm a person in the community, a worker, whoever, and I go to our policy manual online and write harassment, I shouldn't only see the harassment of students, I want to get one that says harassment of anyone, whether it be harassment of adults or anything, so that we can see it, even though it's probably just going to be copy and pasted from some of the stuff that's in here. I think explicitly stating, I don't want to ever get a report from any agency or person that says, but for us not having a school committee policy, that it's unfair to discriminate against adults and harass adults. We can't find that they, I don't want to ever have that happen again for her, so that's where I'm coming at from.
Hmm.
It's not to, I just think it's an addition, not necessarily what you have. With that, I make a motion to refer?
A motion is made by Mr. Agia to refer, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Bailey. Roll call?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Har?
Yes. Is there any new business? No new business?
Motion to return.
Motion is made by Mr. Agia, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Roll call?
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Bailey?
Mr. Bailey?
Yes.
Mr. Har.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.